Good morning, everybody, and welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a special meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, December 12, 2003. I won't go through the normal routine here this morning. I think we all know why we're here, but before we begin discussions, let me ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Cardinals Garcetti, Grul, Hahn, Labange, Ledlow, Mysakowski, Parks, Perry, Rea, Smith, Vieragoso, White, Sign, Padilla, ten members, eleven members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, and before officially beginning the matters for today, let me recognize a special guest who is in Council Chambers today, visiting from El Salvador. We have Monsignor Jose Adolfo Mojica. Bienvenido. Welcome to Los Angeles. And we could sure use your prayers this morning, members and members of the public. We have agendas for today, discussion with various city officials and staff regarding the state budget crisis and the impact of pending state legislation on the city of Los Angeles. I'd like to ask the appropriate city staff to come to the table. We do have the CLA, the CAO, representatives of the City Attorney's Office. I also expect the mayor to join us momentarily, so as soon as he walks in, we'll certainly want to hear from the mayor. But maybe before hearing from those who wish to present, let me recognize Council Member Parks, Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee, followed by Council Member Mysakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think it is certainly one of thank Ms. Mysakowski for going forward and getting this meeting together. I think it's so important that we're here because we have seen so much material in the newspaper and then having set through last Tuesday's Budget and Finance Committee, there's some remarkable issues I think we have to come to grips with. We were told no more than a couple of months ago that we could be in the deficit anywhere from $186 to $236 million, but some remarkable things have happened since then. We have the not potential, the likelihood of losing $19 million a month throughout the rest of this fiscal, $19 million a month for the rest of this fiscal year. We also have been advised through a new actuarial study that we have about a $90 million shortfall in our pension and benefits package. And as we move through this, and although Sacramento's talking a variety of different plans, they're at best promises without the likelihood of anything occurring between now and June 30th. The last number that we left off with Bill Fujioka in that meeting was somewhere in the neighborhood of over $400 million, just for this fiscal year. And so knowing that if everything in the state was as it was months ago, we knew they will start off July 1st with a $10 billion deficit if everything had gone as projected when the budget was signed. And so I think it's an issue that we're reflecting on, that we have a choice of saying it's going to be a bad, bad year, or it's going to be a bad, 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 bad year. And so even if all the things that are promised in Sacramento are such that come to light, we still have a tremendous budget crisis. I think the issues of looking through the CAO's Second Financial Status Report begins to outline some of the things that we're going to have to wrestle with. And I think the issue comes clear that when certain signals that we debated during the budget about the UB account, when one of the primary recommendations is sweep that account clean, because there is no ability to address those issues, when the word "hard freeze" is used in the report saying every hiring opportunity is frozen through the rest of this fiscal year, with the exception of one that deals with the fire department because it's less expensive to hire than to pay overtime, but even that has to be reflected on. What came clear in the committee is that there is absolutely nothing that we're addressing that's not on the table, that if we're seriously going to get through this fiscal year and next fiscal year, we're going to have to have a combination of strategies from squeezing, merging, realigning, to looking for additional cash revenue, to looking at increased fees, to look at increased issues to deal with taxation. But we, as we know in this city, our largest amount of our budget is personnel. We cannot address a budget crisis without addressing personnel, from looking at issues that may be furloughs, might be developing a list for layoffs, might be a situation in which, again, as we directed the CAO a while back, to begin to think about sitting down with unions to ask for returns to assist this city in closing the gap. We passed out a report to all the Budget and Finance Committee members recently that was completed by the CLA that talked about how did the top, I think, seven cities in California close the budget gap this year? Every one of them closed their budget gap by cutting personnel, getting returns from the unions in their city, so that they have the ability to get through the year, this fiscal year. Now they will also have to go back to the table to address these issues as they're confronting us. And so I think it is important to throw these things on the table and begin to think seriously things that are going to confront us, as we know, and we have contracts that are going to be continually reviewed. The message, in my judgment, has to be that we have to suspend contract negotiation. We cannot, on the one hand, begin to continue negotiating with unions about contracts and going to other unions and saying, "Give us money back." The fact that they talk to each other, they know that, or believe that, there's money available as long as we're talking. And as long as any one of us sends the message that there may be money available, they're more than willing to continue to negotiate. So I think that's one of the issues that is important as we go forward, is our consistency in addressing the multitude of issues that we're going to be confronted with. Mr. Fujioka and Mr. Deaton will have all those particular numbers to address, but I think in dealing with the laborious budget process that we've gone through and talking to department heads and sending the message clearly to them that we must stay within budget, they must absorb the 1% cut, and then proceed to look at the exercise they were given during budget process of 10%, maybe 5%, 7% to 10%, and even though it's cutting way into the bone as opposed to cutting into the fat, that's the reality of where we are. So it's my judgment, as we continue through the budget process and the budget hearings, we're going to have to have that multifaceted approach of addressing every angle from merging or streamlining, to layoffs, to furloughs, to negotiation, to going back into the budget process or the negotiation process, asking for takebacks. That's the reality of the city of Los Angeles budget process. And one of the things I think is so important for all of us, if everything in Sacramento works as planned, we still have a budget crisis. And so we cannot have a celebration after whatever's worked out in Sacramento and say our budget process is solved. We will be no less than a couple million dollars in the hole, even if everything in Sacramento works perfectly. And also, I think we have to be concerned with, is that even if some of the promises are kept, we are in a situation to where at minimum we'll have a cash flow problem. And so these are the kinds of things that we have to address, be aware of, and be ready to take those tough decisions. And I don't think our strategy can only be to send a pointing finger at Sacramento and say, "Do your job." It also is a situation that we are going to be asked to do ours and some very serious decisions, but hopefully very consistent decisions as we go forward. And so I would hope that as we hear these messages today, that we see how serious the situation is, and that there is no leakage in the sense that one department can be held accountable where another's not, some can hire and others can't. These are all the kinds of things that have to be dealt with in a consistent manner. And so I think, Mr. Chair, we have our work cut out for us, and I think as we hear the numbers today, we begin to see how enormous that task is, but I hope that in setting that framework that we have been working with in Budget Committee, that we'll progress and go through and bring the council some of those strategies in the near future.
Thank you, Mr. Parks, and colleagues will have plenty of time for discussion and opportunities for solutions to be proposed, but at this time, let me recognize the mayor of the city, Mayor Hahn.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council. Obviously, you've been following the events up in Sacramento. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to talk about how those events in Sacramento are affecting us here in the city of Los Angeles. You know, I've spent a lot of time over the past several months going up to Sacramento, calling the governor, calling legislators, organizing the big city mayors to go up and make our case about how devastating it is to us to have our budgets be used to balance the state's budget. Really want to thank all the members here who have been assisting in that effort, continuing to contact their legislators, pressing upon them that their constituents are our constituents, and that our constituents expect that public safety is not going to be jeopardized. Taking a look at what's happened yesterday, the Assembly has approved putting the bond measure that the governor was requesting on the ballot and proved a spending limit. The issue of the backfill to the cities was brought up, but that, those motions, those motions were defeated, so that issue was not addressed. The bonds will be put before the voters, $15 billion. Those are going to be repaid with what they call their triple flip, you know, taking a quarter cent of our sales tax and using that as the revenue stream to pay for the bonds, with that money to be repaid. Haven't we heard that before? By additional property tax revenue. It's going to require the legislature to adopt a balanced budget every year. I thought they already had to do that. It's going to prohibit the issuance of any further deficit bonds. They'll create a reserve fund until their reserve reaches the amount of $8 billion or 5% of the general fund. Some other things in there. It's interesting that in trying to ascertain what's in that $15 billion, we know $10.7 billion of it is to cover the $10.7 billions of bonds that were earlier authorized by the legislature but have been subject to legal challenge. I think about $2 billion in pension obligation bonds for about 12.7, so that leaves about $2.3 billion unaccounted for. I think it looks like that's money...
This, and although Sacramento is talking of a variety of different plans, they're at best promises without the likelihood of anything occurring between now and June 30th. The last number that we left off with Bill Fujioka in that meeting was somewhere in the neighborhood of over $400 million, just for this fiscal year. And so, knowing that if everything in the state was as it was months ago, we knew they will start off July 1st with a $10 billion deficit if everything had gone as projected when the budget was signed. And so, I think it's an issue that we're reflecting on, that we have a choice of saying it's going to be a bad, bad year, or it's going to be a bad, 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 bad year. And so, even if all the things that are promised in Sacramento are such that come to light, we still have a tremendous budget crisis. I think the issues of looking through the CAO's second financial status report begins to outline some of the things that we're going to have to wrestle with. And I think the issue comes clear that when certain signals that we debated during the budget about the UB account, when one of the primary recommendations is sweep that account clean, because there is no ability to address those issues. When the word "hard freeze" is used in the report saying every hiring opportunity is frozen through the rest of this fiscal year, with the exception of one that deals with the fire department, because it's less expensive to hire than to pay overtime. But even that has to be reflected on. What came clear in the committee is that there is absolutely nothing that we're addressing that's not on the table. That if we're seriously going to get through this fiscal year and next fiscal year, we're going to have to have a combination of strategies from squeezing, merging, realigning, to looking for additional cash revenue, to looking at increased fees, to look at increased issues to deal with taxation. But we, as we know in this city, our largest amount of our budget is personnel. We cannot address a budget crisis without addressing personnel, from looking at issues that may be furloughs, might be developing a list for layoffs, might be a situation in which, again, as we directed the CAO a while back, to begin to think about sitting down with unions to ask for returns to assist this city in closing the gap. We passed out a report to all the Budget and Finance Committee members recently that was completed by the CLA that talked about how did the top, I think, seven cities in California close the budget gap this year? Every one of them closed their budget gap by cutting personnel, getting returns from the unions in their city, so that they have the ability to get through the year, this fiscal year. Now, they will also have to go back to the table to address these issues as they're confronting us. And so, I think it is important to throw these things on the table and begin to think seriously things that are going to confront us, as we know, and we have contracts that are going to be continually reviewed. The message, in my judgment, has to be that we have to suspend contract negotiation. We cannot, on the one hand, begin to continue negotiating with unions about contracts and going to other unions and saying, "Give us money back." The fact that they talk to each other, they know that, or believe that, there's money available as long as we're talking. And as long as any one of us sends the message that there may be money available, they're more than willing to continue to negotiate. So I think that's one of the issues that is important as we go forward, is our consistency in addressing the multitude of issues that we're going to be confronted with. Mr. Fujioka and Mr. Deaton will have all those particular numbers to address. But I think in dealing with the laborious budget process that we've gone through and talking to department heads, and sending the message clearly to them that we must stay within budget, they must absorb the 1% cut, and then proceed to look at the exercise they were given during budget process of 10%, maybe 5%, 7% to 10%. And even though it's cutting way into the bone, as opposed to cutting into the fat, that's the reality of where we are. So, it's my judgment, as we continue through the budget process and the budget hearings, we're going to have to have that multifaceted approach of addressing every angle from merging or streamlining, to layoffs, to furloughs, to negotiation, to going back into the budget process or the negotiation process, asking for takebacks. That's the reality of the City of Los Angeles budget process. And one of the things I think is so important for all of us, if everything in Sacramento works as planned, we still have a budget crisis. And so, we cannot have a celebration after whatever's worked out in Sacramento and say, "Our budget process is solved." We will be no less than a couple million dollars in the hole, even if everything in Sacramento works perfectly. And also, I think we have to be concerned with, is that even if some of the promises are kept, we are in a situation to where, at minimum, we'll have a cash flow problem. And so, these are the kinds of things that we have to address, be aware of, and be ready to take those tough decisions. And I don't think our strategy can only be to send a pointing finger at Sacramento and say, "Do your job." It also is a situation that we are going to be asked to do ours, and some very serious decisions, but hopefully, very consistent decisions as we go forward. And so, I would hope that as we hear these messages today, that we see how serious the situation is, and that there is no leakage, in the sense that one department can be held accountable where another's not, some can hire and others can't. These are all the kinds of things that have to be dealt with in a consistent manner. And so, I think, Mr. Chair, we have our work cut out for us. And I think as we hear the numbers today, we begin to see how enormous that task is. But I hope that in setting that framework that we have been working with in Budget Committee, that we'll progress and go through and bring the council some of those strategies in the near future.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. And colleagues, we'll have plenty of time for discussion and opportunities for solutions to be proposed. But at this time, let me recognize the mayor of the city, Mayor Hahn.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council. Obviously, you've been following the events up in Sacramento. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to talk about how those events in Sacramento are affecting us here in the City of Los Angeles. You know, I've spent a lot of time over the past several months going up to Sacramento, calling the governor, calling legislators, organizing the big city mayors to go up and make our case about how devastating it is to us to have our budgets be used to balance the state's budget. Really want to thank all the members here who have been assisting in that effort, continuing to contact their legislators, pressing upon them that their constituents are our constituents, and that our constituents expect that public safety is not going to be jeopardized. In taking a look at what's happened yesterday, the Assembly has approved putting the bond measure that the governor was requesting on the ballot and proved a spending limit. The issue of the backfill to the cities was brought up, but that, those motions, those motions were defeated. So that issue was not addressed. The bonds will be put before the voters, $15 billion. Those are going to be repaid with a, what they call their triple flip, you know, taking a quarter cent of our sales tax and using that as the revenue stream to pay for the bonds, with that money to be repaid. Haven't we heard that before? By additional property tax revenue. It's going to require the legislature to adopt a balanced budget every year. I thought they already had to do that. It's going to prohibit the issuance of any further deficit bonds. They'll create a reserve fund until their reserve reaches an amount of $8 billion or 5% of the general fund. Some other things in there. It's interesting that in trying to ascertain what's in that $15 billion, we know $10.7 billion of it is to cover the $10.7 billions of bonds that were earlier authorized by the legislature, but have been subject to legal challenge. I think about $2 billion in pension obligation bonds, for about 12.7. So that leaves about $2.3 billion unaccounted for. I think it looks like that's money that they can use, you know, over the next several years, any way they see fit. But clearly, the issue of addressing the backfill to local government hasn't happened. So here we are. The easiest thing for us to do, and what we usually do when we come into problems like this, is to cut services across the board. I don't think that's what we should do. I think we should all work together to develop a list of our priorities and continue programs that we must continue to fund. And at the same time, I think all of us have to work together to identify things that are important and worthwhile, but that, at this time, are not the top priorities of the people that we serve. And sadly, and fortunately for me personally, given what Sacramento is doing to us now, I am conceding that we cannot expand the police department this year. However, I think at the very minimum, we have to keep our police department at the strength that it is today. Simply because Sacramento has broken their promise to us, doesn't mean that we can break our promise to the people of the city, that we're going to move forward and provide them with safety in their neighborhoods. Police officers are the last things that we should cut. I think that we have to be creative, we have to put everything on the table, but we have to make sure that we don't repeat what happened in the previous five years, was that we saw a department that had begun to shrink. In fact, had shrunk by almost 10%, over 900 officers. We made some significant gains this year. With your participation, we were able to expand the police department by over 289 officers this past year. We got another 200 officers back who were doing MTA duty. That additional strength on the streets of our Los Angeles, I believe, is a big part of why we saw a 24% drop in homicide citywide, and a 5% drop in overall crime. We can't afford to go backwards again. And I understand that if we make that commitment to the people, that that comes at a price. And I'm just going to suggest some items, not saying that this is what needs to, or has to happen, but things that we should look at in terms of our budget this year. We have new neighborhood city halls on the table for nearly $2 million. We have bulky item drop-off centers, which are great ideas, but that's, you know, $700,000 from the general fund. The exhibit that we wanted to prepare for the Golden Monkeys at the zoo is something that we probably need to reconsider. The renovations that are absolutely critical to the Griffith Observatory, $6.5 million is in the general fund for that. I think we need to critically look at that. Our Affordable Housing Trust Fund that we're so proud of, that we got to $100 million, 9.6 million of that is identified from the general fund. And even when we go through all those things, I still think that we may have things that we can't afford to do. I would like to continue to expand what we were able to do in the fire department, with the addition of the 10th man to additional 10 task forces. But that's another $1.5 million additional to the general fund. I think we need to look at our general city purposes account that starts off the year with $24 million. Our urban development action grants of $16 million. Are there other uses that can be higher priorities from that money? And the MICLA funding, again, that's going to the Golden Monkeys exhibit at the zoo. Let's look at some of these things and say, "They are great ideas, but are they critical to the priorities that the people want us to do?" I'd like to have your body work with the CLA and the CAO, especially the chair of the Budget and Finance Committee, and me, as we wrestle with this havoc that has been put on us by Sacramento. $105 million is the number we're talking about, that doesn't seem to be forthcoming from Sacramento. That could change. It doesn't look like it's going to change today. We'll obviously have to wait to see what the governor's budget, I think it's due sometime in January 10th or so, whether or not that budget is going to contain the backfill or not. So, for a few weeks, we're not going to know what's going to happen. I assume the worst, I think we should all assume the worst, that that money doesn't come forward, and we need to begin looking at what we need to do. We need to end all new hiring, I believe, of city employees, with the exception of the sworn fire department personnel, and the hiring of replacement police officers, so that we don't, you know, reduce our public safety at all. I think we need to cut all the programs that are in the unappropriated balance. These are great programs, again, like new equipment for our city parks, the expansion of this very popular, very successful 3-1-1 program. Again, I don't think we can afford any new programs at this time. We should use certainly the savings from the unappropriate balance, which is $28 million. And I believe we still have a reserve fund. We should not deplete it entirely, but we should look at using part of the reserve fund, again, for our priority programs. We should also just, I think, just freeze all equipment purchases right now in the city, expense accounts, you know. We're not going to be doing any more traveling, you know, stop any further contracts, just shut everything down. But the problem we've got is 85% of all of the city budget is personnel costs. And so, we've got to look at that, and I hope that we, you know, do everything we can to minimize any impact on public safety to our citizens. We have to ask for things with our employees that they can look at, whether those are voluntary furloughs, whether those are items that we can look at in terms of contract savings. Certainly, we want to do what we need to do to minimize the eventuality that we may actually have to lay off city employees. So, I've already begun to meet with bargaining units of the City of Los Angeles and say, "We're all in this together. We can all meet these challenges together, we can solve these problems together, but everybody's got to participate." Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And before proceeding with the council discussion, I know there's representatives here from the City Attorney's Office, maybe the Controller's Office, colleagues who wish to hear from them as well, before continuing our discussion. City Attorney's Office?
Terry Bowers and Pete Ettravaria for the City Attorney's Office. As you might guess, the fiscal crisis is of dire concern to counties and cities throughout the state. We've been involved in our own research with regard to potential litigation and potential legal options that the city might have. In addition, we've been coordinating with the California League of Cities and certain other counties. So there is a unified effort throughout the state to look at the various legal options we might have to address this fiscal crisis. Pete is here to just give you kind of a general overview of what some of those legal arguments might be, but I would caution you that this is probably not the forum to get into the strengths and weaknesses or details of the actual legal theories that we might be able to advance. Pete?
Essentially, what we've done is, we're working with the CLA and the CAO, of course, to keep track of the developments as they occur and to figure out the impact on the city, and what the potential legal impact would be in our options. We're continuing that as a process. At the same time, there are a number of city attorneys who are reviewing those same issues, and we're in contact with them. And it's an evolving situation, as you well know, so that we are trying to keep pace with it as we go along and be prepared, as you wish to address those policy issues and to answer your questions. There is discussion among the cities and some of the counties about the potential for litigation. We also are following and exploring those theories ourselves, and would be happy to discuss those in any detail with you in close session, if that's your desire now or at some time in the near future.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I've just been informed that the Controller is not able to be with us this morning. Returning now to council discussion, Ms. Sikowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. And first of all, let me thank the mayor and my colleagues. As we all know, this was not a day we were planning to be here. But as the mayor has begun to meet with each of us individually about next year and the budget and the prognosis, and to use his word, how grim it was, when he met with me earlier this week, he said, "We should see if we could call a special session of the council to come together." And that's really what I see this today, is a coming together. The mayor did lead us in July, a large delegation of us, to go to Sacramento, to then talk to Sacramento about the vehicle license fee and local government's dependency on our money, and that they ought not to be able to take it. And today, we heard the mayor address us, again, using the words grim, but that we are now all in this together. We can't afford debate anymore. Everything is on the table. As we heard just some ideas, which is not going to be as complete as the report that will come from our CLA and CAO, of things we not only have to consider, but have to do. The mayor mentioned some things that are near and dear to his heart. The mayor mentioned some things that are near and dear to many individual members' hearts around this horseshoe, those things that we ourselves have championed. It is a new grim day, and we can't afford anymore to depend on promises. I think perhaps the most shaking thing that happened this week is where our new governor-elect had both promised and campaigned, both before the election and afterwards, "Not to worry local government, we'll make you whole." And we opened the newspaper Wednesday morning and read, the governor said, "Sorry, I can't make you whole. Don't hold me accountable, blame the legislature." Well, we can't afford sitting around for a blame game anymore. We have to get down to business. We have to assume the worst. The $15 billion bond that they're fixing their problem with doesn't fix our problem. CLA says he doesn't see where the money comes from. He sort of, they can't not make us whole, but there's no money to make us whole. So, we have to act as if it's not coming. It's not coming this year, and it's not coming next year. The report that was mentioned that the CAO and CLA are working on was addressed briefly in Budget and Finance Committee this week, where Councilmember Parks, the chair of the committee, said, "We will have it on committee next week. Stop talking about it and start looking at these proposals, start making the choices." I am really, really pleased that today, the mayor is with us to say, "These choices we are going to make together because we have to. We can't afford not to." That committee action for Tuesday is scheduled with a placeholder on council on Wednesday. So we will have to start addressing it. And we know that if we don't address it now, each day, each month that we delay, it's harder, because it cumulatively gives us less time to adjust for the bigger loss. But everything is now on the table. The ideas of the mayor, not only in concert with this, but through his own ability, issuing executive orders about freezing things that have to be frozen, is going to affect us all, it's going to affect our constituents. But it's not just a bad, bad, bad year, it's a horrible year. And it's a horrible year that hopefully, not only will we get through, but we will also take it somewhat as an opportunity, whether working with the city attorney, whether looking at seeing when and where we can call something a state of crisis, an emergency, and really change the way things have been done in the past. This is now what we're going to be doing. And members, I really see this council now as a Budget and Finance Committee of the whole, going on through the rest of this year and into next year, because it's not going to get better. We have to seriously readdress. And as bad as we think it is, you know, Mr. Deaton will let you know, in some local governments, their 30% and 40% of their budget is the vehicle license fee. That's why I think we've heard this week for the first time, some local governments starting to talk about the consideration of bankruptcy. It is that drastic, that serious. I don't think we have to go there, but we are going to have to feel it in every corner, in every pocket, in every budget line item that we thought we had as safe and secure. It's not anymore. These are tough times.
Thank you. Have Mr. Dudlow, followed by Mr. Weiss, Ms. Hahn, Ms. Gruehl, Mr. Cardenas, and Mr. Labanche.
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, first, thank you, Councilmember Parks, for the leadership that you're stepping up with here, and Councilmember Sikowski for instigating today's session. Mayor, it's great to have you here today. And I concur, just the last couple of days, we've had an opportunity to meet a couple of times. And I really appreciate the way in which you're reaching out individually, and appreciated the leadership that you showed as we went up to Sacramento earlier this year. I wanted to say a couple of things. One, that I think that we need to make sure that, as Cindy Sikowski just said, we really do move ourselves into a problem-solving mindset here, as almost the full body of the Budget Committee. But we also have a couple of opportunities that we ought to explore. One is to begin to participate in the task force that Assemblymember Lowenthal is chairing. I think that's an important place for us to weigh in right away, because between now and January 10th, I think the dialogue that happens with the LA delegation is particularly critical. But then, secondly, is actually to look, Mayor and Council President and Budget Chair, at the potential of bringing together the LA delegation, to the extent we can. Because I think they, for the most part, have been our champion in the sense of attempting to protect public safety, attempting to protect education, and attempting to protect those core services that are so essential for local governments. And I think that we also need to move very quickly to get the public involved. Councilmember Hahn, who plays a significant role in our neighborhood council process, I for one would like to see us quickly get a couple of ideas on the table, a couple of options, as the mayor said, and start shopping these out to the neighborhood councils. I think it's really essential that, as I've heard it referred to a couple of times, we start looking at rebuilding the city from the bottom up, and starting with some of the people in the community that are most engaged at the block level, to give us some direction and guidance. I think we can take for granted where public safety is going to lie on that list. But I do think there are many things that the mayor laid out, and I'm sure many of us can come up with some other ones. But I will close with this. I for one want to have the discussion of layoffs as a last resort. I for one am going to continue to challenge this body to recognize that the income that comes into low-income communities, like South and East LA, is disproportionately dependent on public sector jobs. If you were to look at the wages and revenue that comes into the low-income communities of this city, disproportionately, the non-subsidized revenue comes in via public sector jobs. And that is going to have a devastating impact that will have a triple effect on the economies in neighborhoods like those that I represent. And so, I want to caution us, as we go down this path, to really do look at those items that I think the mayor just laid out, and in fact, to start talking to the neighborhood leadership about how we begin to rebuild from the bottom up, and really protect the workforce that are delivering the services to this city. I know it is difficult, and I agree with you, Councilmember Parks, we don't want to send a message that there is money there. I think everybody needs to be involved, you're exactly right. But I want to make sure that we recognize the devastating impact that will happen to those communities that are already suffering from inadequate revenue and resources.
Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, boy, I'll tell you, listening to everybody who's spoken so far this morning, it's a very solemn mood in this chamber. But I don't want to just be solemn. I think we ought to get angry, because I feel anger, I feel passion. I saw our mayor and many of our great council members this week, speaking out with those police officers behind them, also displaying anger and passion. And now is not the time just for solemnity, it's the time for passion. And frankly, it's the time not just to get mad, but perhaps to get even, and send our lawyers into court to fight Arnold Schwarzenegger, and to fight off the great Sacramento swindle, Part 10. I mean, we just lived through a statewide campaign in which the winning candidate made very clear, very plain, that he would not harm public safety. He would not put police officers and firefighters' positions in peril. And yet, that is exactly what he's done. It's a dramatic turnabout, and boy, I hope you didn't blink, because it was a quick turnabout too. So I don't know about you, but I feel very comfortable, if the law is on our side, sending Rocky into court against Arnold any day. And Terry, and Pete too. I've seen Terry Bowers in court, I'll tell you that. I've seen Terry Bowers in court, I'll tell you that. I'd love to send Terry into court. And so, I prepared a written motion, but I'll just make it verbally today. I know Mr. Villarrealosa and Mr. Parks are very interested in this as well. I'd move that we instruct our attorneys to report back here in closed session next week, Tuesday, if at all possible, for a thorough discussion of the legal options the City of Los Angeles has. And we'll have that discussion in closed session. And in my judgment, I don't want this city to be held hostage pending this March ballot measure. And then, even if the March ballot measure passes, we can still be held hostage. They've got a million ways to hold us hostage. We might have only one way to redress our grievances, and that's in court. And if our attorneys come in and present solid grounds for a lawsuit, I think it may be our fiduciary responsibility to our constituents to go ahead and file that suit. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, in the meantime, I think we need to take some bold action here in the City of Los Angeles. You know, I was on the Budget and Finance Committee earlier this year when we passed this budget. And as many of you remember, it was a long process. It was very contentious, but we passed it. But even at that time, our CLA and our CAO warned us of dire predictions, and many of you agreed with them. And we were warned of a time that things might get particularly grim, and that time is here. And one of those was, of course, the prediction that we might lose our vehicle license fee. And now, that prediction is coming true. And while we can spend all day blaming Sacramento, I like the idea of having Rocky meet the Terminator. I can hear the music now. I think that's a good idea. And yes, in my opinion, there have been broken promises, and I think the cities in this state are going to lose. But that doesn't help us right now, right here. My recommendation, as we come to realize that this budget that we passed, for all intense purposes, for this discussion and this debate, is obsolete. I don't have the strength, or I would rip it in half for the visual, but it is obsolete. The Terminator already did. So, my recommendation, and what I'm going to do is call for the mayor, listen up, I'm going to call, that the mayor and your staff put together an emergency budget team. And I would expect that you would have a chair of our Budget and Finance Committee, a CLA, CAO. I would think the president of our city council would sit on that committee. And what I'm asking is that you come back, you work over the holidays, and you come back on January 1st, and you present us with an emergency six-month budget. We can sit here all day, and I agree, we need to shop it out to the city councils, but the mayor's already got priorities that the city councils have brought to him at the last neighborhood of Congress, Congress of Neighborhoods. And that, thank you, that we have this emergency six-month budget from January 1 to the end of the fiscal year, and that we, the city council, receive this budget on January 1st, and we work quickly, January 2nd, and we work quickly. We hold hearings, and I'd ask the Budget and Finance to begin scheduling these hearings. And we basically go through another budget process like we have already done this year. But it's an emergency. Times are tough, and if things change in Sacramento, then we can relook at that. But I don't think we can wait for the lawsuits to come down on our side. I don't think we can wait for the promises to be made. I would like to see the mayor present us with an emergency six-month budget immediately when we come back after the holidays, that we can begin holding hearings on and make those tough decisions that we need to make. But I'd like the mayor to start. I'd like you to take the first crack at it and present it to the city council right after the holidays. And I think you'll have great support from staff members, on all of our staffs, that we're willing to come in and work over the holidays to come up with this emergency budget. And I'd like to have a second on that.
I'd second it, but add the city controller.
City controller. Well, I'm not making up the budget team. Mayor, if you'd like to respond to that, I think, I'm not saying what the specifics are, but I think we need an emergency budget team that then puts this together for us in January.
Yeah, given the urgency of the situation, the traditional way we do things obviously doesn't fit this, so Councilwoman, I would certainly, you know, take up, you know, that responsibility to work with the city administrative officer, the chief legislative analyst. I think Councilman Labange's suggestion to add the controller, as well as working with your chair of the Budget and Finance Committee, that we all work together to move very quickly here. We don't have a lot of time to just do it the old-fashioned way. I think this is excellent. I'm willing to participate, and with everybody else, I think we can get through this.
Yeah. Colleagues, let me also advise, as our city attorney has been advising me, what has been agendized today is a discussion on the budget. We now have two formal motions that have been made, question as to whether or not we can appropriately act on them today, or post them appropriately and accordingly for consideration next Tuesday and Wednesday. Also want to recognize what's been agendized in the Budget and Finance Committee for Tuesday and is set for next Wednesday's schedule. I'm sure the issue of litigation considerations is part of that discussion. And as far as a six-month budget is concerned, you know, I think the teams are formally in place at this time, but the reports due to budget and from budget next week speak to the same. So, I just want to make sure we're not being too repetitive, aren't opening council files unnecessarily, and that all of this is on track. Ms. Gruehl, Mr. Labange, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Villarrealosa, Ms. Perry, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Smith. Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, today is a historic day that we are all here with the mayor, with representatives from the city attorney's office and controller's office, talking about the impact of what the state legislature has done, or in this case, not done, for the City of Los Angeles and cities across the state. I'm not into the blame game of whose problem or fault, actually, whose problem it is, whose fault it is today, but I've been talking to my neighborhood councils. It just so happened that I have been speaking the last couple of nights at neighborhood councils in my district. And they don't understand the impact of what is happening in Sacramento, until we talk to them about the fact that we may not be able to hire additional police officers or fill vacancies that occur, or firefighters, or that we will not be able to fix those streets in their neighborhoods, or put up that stoplight that we had promised them to save lives. They don't understand because it's been a lot of just politics as usual. Well, this meeting today is talking about when the rubber hits the road. What are those impacts going to be to our constituents? So, they can get angry, as Mr. Weiss has said, they can get as angry as we are, that we did balance our budget this year. We do every year. And we want to make sure that the state does the same. The governor and the legislature understand that. And I know that they talked about, and the mayor alluded to this as well in his remarks, backfilling and being able, in the legislature, and they didn't pass anything. The Assembly went out of session for the holiday. The Senate is still in session. I want to send a message today that says, "Don't let the City of Los Angeles be the Scrooge of the holidays by having to make the difficult choices." We have to make the difficult choices. We have to face our constituents every single day. People who are in Sacramento, as wonderful as, and I know that we have legislators here who spent time in their districts here locally, but they spend more time up there than they do here. We have to explain to our residents why we can't fix their streets, why they have a problem that the police officer didn't come as quickly as we would have liked in their neighborhoods. I want to ask that state legislature and the governor to stay in session as well, as Janice asked the mayor and council and our staffs to work on the budget similarly, to come back and to support some type of legislation that allows for backfill in our cities. I think that is really important. We chatted the other day, I talked to Supervisor Yaroslavsky about the potential of not sending our money up. We collect a lot of money here in the city and the county of Los Angeles, probably more than we get from the state of California. So, he said at the time that he thought that their auditor over there would go to jail if he didn't send the money up, and we laughed about him being the sacrificial lamb, maybe. How much is the bail? There you go, probably cheaper. But I think it is important to tell them, we raise that money here. And I know the CAO has also been looking at the swap of the property tax versus sales tax, and what difference that would make in the City of Los Angeles. This is not, you know, regular days. We have many general managers who are sitting out in the audience today, wondering how it's going to impact them, wondering how it's going to impact their employees and the services that they provide. We've been talking in audits and government efficiency about ways in which we can become more efficient. Well, now, again, rubber hits the road. You all are going to have to use your creative thinking, thinking outside the box, because the bond measure that was passed by the legislature last night, and the governor has indicated his support for, does not go to the voters until March. And we don't have a guarantee that it's going to be passed. So, that we are going to have to look long and hard, look at consolidation. We have an issue before audits and government efficiency on Wednesday, and creating a human services department and consolidating some of our smaller agencies. And there's been a lot of discussion about how that will devastate those departments. Well, we're facing today either consolidation or elimination. That's our options. So, colleagues, I am so pleased that we are having this meeting today, that we are saying to our constituents that we mean business, that we are not going to shirk our responsibilities. We are forced to make these tough choices, and we just ask the state to do the same, to understand the implications of what their decisions or lack of decisions are going to have on our citizens and on our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gruehl. Let me recognize Councilmember Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, Mr. Fujio is whispering into my ear with that most recent statistic as to what percent of our city budget this deficit represents. And the figure he's giving me is 7%. 7% of our city budget is what we're talking about. The vast majority of the deficit is not caused by our own budgeting practices. It's not caused by our own discrepancy between revenue and expenditures. It is caused by the actions of the state of California. And I've said it before, and I've said it again, this governor wants to be Governor Action, Action, Action. All he's done to Los Angeles has been Governor Cut, Cut, Cut. 7% of our annual city budget is what's at stake here. And most elected officials will agree that public safety is our number-one priority. And just hypothetically speaking, and I say this for the benefit of the members of the public who are watching or listening, hypothetically speaking, if we agreed to leave the public safety budget alone, leave police and fire status quo, knowing that our public safety budget is 75% of our city budget, one could argue that the 7% of our city budget that's now a deficit is really 28, almost 30% of everything else the city does. So, unless we're in a position to clearly say nearly a third of housing, of transportation, of street services, of meals for seniors, of social programs, of every other function and program of the City of Los Angeles, being cut on the average of a third, I paint that picture because that is the magnitude of the dilemma before us. Yes, it's tough choices. Yes, it requires working together. Let me also say a couple of things. I was heartened at the mayor coming in to address this body this morning, and for him to have made the concession on the reality of the growth of the police department was huge. Most of us were here less than a year ago, with the exception of the new members who've only been recently elected. We recall the discussion and the debate that took place in the last budget cycle. For the mayor to come in and recognize that the police department will not expand this year is a huge step and a huge indicator to the magnitude of our dilemma. I agree that keeping the number of officers in the police department at its current level is a great goal for us to have, and we should turn over every rock we can to try to achieve that. It's a wonderful goal, but it won't be easy. I want to add to the mix, the foundation of the budget discussions from here forward, also that we need to keep a healthy reserve fund. A big part of last year's budget debate was the concern about using one-time dollars for ongoing expenditures. So, I'm going to ask that we also advocate and demand that we maintain healthy reserve funds in this current fiscal year, as well as beginning the budget for the next fiscal year, because I don't think these solemn days, as Mr. Weiss put it, are over quite yet. And finally, colleagues, to echo what Mr. Parks has begun, we need to do a better job of educating the public. If it means calling our neighborhood councils into action, then let's do that. If it means that we have to go to them and not calling them to come to us, then we need to do that. There's 15 of us around this horseshoe. There's a number of neighborhood councils and other community-based organizations in our own districts. If we each visited five, maybe 10, groups in the next month or two, that's hundreds upon thousands of people that we will be touching and educating, not just polling, educating about the realities of our budget and the tough choices that lay ahead for all of us if we truly do work together. And finally, just to reiterate what's coming from the Budget Committee next week, and what's scheduled for consideration in this council next Wednesday, it does include the six-month budget, and how do we get through the rest of this fiscal year, as Ms. Hahn has proposed. It does include the discussion of litigation alternatives and options for consideration, as Mr. Weiss has mentioned. All of that discussion is scheduled to take place in the Budget Committee on Tuesday, in full council on Wednesday. And so, I believe the best course of action to take today for these motions and suggestions and recommendations and requests is to package it all in those discussions in committee on Tuesday and in this full council for action on Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Councilmember Labange.
Thank you very much. Rocky Delgado is here, and I'm just going to give him preference right now, our city attorney, but I would like to hold him my time. Rocky.
Honorable councilmembers, I wanted to come and let you know that I'm ready for the fight. I want to discuss the specifics, obviously, in closed session, and we will do that. However, I can tell you that it is my legal opinion that the state is legally required to send the money that the city is owed. Again, I believe it would be illegal for the state to deny cities and counties vital funding for police and firefighters. All of you, like I am, committed to the quality of life in our neighborhoods, and there's nothing more vital to that than public safety services. So, again, I'm here to let you know, prepared to take on the fight. I'm not a boxer, but I am a fighter, and I will do that on behalf of the City of Los Angeles. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Delgado. Mr. Labange.
Twenty-nine years ago, I started with the City of Los Angeles, and Cindy, you were here, too. And 29 years ago, or 27 years ago, was Proposition 13, which changed everything here. But this particular change now is a total different change than Prop 13, as we had a restructuring in 1978. And I believe in this city, the loss was eight painters and the fifth person on engine companies, of single-engine companies in the City of Los Angeles, on the firefighter on that. This is a drastic challenge that we have. I appreciate, all of us looking, that everything is absolutely on the table to try to find out. But the key, we always have to remember, there's three things that make up a city. Obviously, the public safety, then the public works, but then the humanities. We have libraries, if you go into it, I went to a reading program, and I just want to state this, last Saturday, and it was busy as Union Station is now in the afternoon with commuter trains. People of our city love our libraries. You go to a park, and it's gigantic how valuable the open space is for these people. But it's going to be an absolute challenge, you know, to close these facilities. Where are people going to go? That is going to be a great challenge. We don't want to close facilities, but we have to put everything on the table to make sure it's right. But I do want to state, public works and public safety. Public safety and public works and humanities, it's what it's all about. So, I'm looking forward to this immediate discussion that we have on these issues related to the budget. I will want to say to the general managers and the... I will want to say to the general managers and the heads of departments that are here, you have a tremendous job and responsibility to the people that you lead and the people that we serve, of trying to be creative on that. It's not a—although it was an absolutely beautiful day in Los Angeles, cold, but beautiful with those clouds, and you could touch the mountains. It was so beautiful. But the challenge that is before us is a storm that we have not seen. It's a storm that we have not been in. So I wanted to, again, as Wendy so eloquently did, address you, to say that you have to call your department staff together and your employees, and to realize that we're in a very difficult time, where we have to all find a way to solve the problems, because the people of Los Angeles depend upon it, and tremendously depend upon it, from all parts of Los Angeles. So I just wanted to stand to appreciate everyone's interest in accelerating the move, but absolutely have to put everything on the table, absolutely how we could do things together better as a city to more effectively serve the people of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to thank everyone that's stepped up and spoken on this issue. Thank the mayor, Rocky, and everyone else. I think the one area that we need to include in this emergency action is working with the city family—we have all the directors here, management—and talk about where we create resources. Let's understand where this city can go, when the departments, the city family acting together can actually identify where the pie can get bigger. Now, I understand we have certain cultures we deal with. We have issues in how we take care of our territories. But the county, the state, and the city are in this together. So how we overcome these territorial issues, how we leverage multi-jurisdictional strengths in our market, let's understand how great the city is. We have a vast population. We have great needs, supply and demand. All the basic economics are here. How do we create this revenue? So let's not just talk about cut and layoffs and getting smaller in terms of operations. Let's talk about how do we perform as a team to move forward to create revenues. The other day, I saw some great literature from Julie Butcher at CIU 347, and they were challenging their employees. Where do you create new ideas to create revenues? Where do you save? There's actually literature out there challenging the workers to do this. I'd love to see the managers do that, the directors of departments, and talk about where they're going to create revenues. What does it take to think more creatively? This should—I believe—should be part of this special session. You know, the other day, when we talked about revenues, just looking at the data reuse, we created 4,000 new housing units. Residential units are going to add to the tax base. I know when we create BIDs, Business Investment Districts, we identify businesses that do not pay into their city licenses. So we have thousands and thousands of opportunities to create revenue. Where are they? Who in our staffs identifies these opportunities? And let's put ourselves in a position where we can make this pie bigger. And one last point about neighborhood councils, Councilmember Hahn. I think it's important that we look at what parts of the city are well-represented in neighborhood councils. I really believe there are many places in our city where the vast majority of the population, they're working two jobs. They are trying their best to deal with latchkey conditions with their children. They do not have the time to be at neighborhood councils. Which areas aren't represented? So those priorities are not overlooked. I know we have a great system, but then again, we have a large gap, I believe, to cover when we talk about representation at the neighborhood level. So I just want to make sure we don't overlook those neighborhoods that do not have that leisure time to participate in all those night meetings, because they too also have needs. So again, I just stress that let's take advantage of this power we have in this city. Let's put our family to the test. Let's identify those opportunities. Let's have our department heads be creative and working with the state and the county and leverage what we have. If we're going to have empty libraries, why not work with our school district to see how we can fill them in, so we can have the libraries open, to create educational facilities so they do not lay dormant? Let's think creatively. Thank you very much.
Mr. Varengaosa.
I thought I was after Perry, but that's fine.
I'm sorry.
Mr. President, members, I want to add to a couple of things that have been said today. First of all, one of the points that the president of the council made today was a very important one, and that was that what we're talking about here is 7% of our budget. But if we were to look at our discretionary budget, what we're talking about is 15% of our discretionary budget. If we're looking at a budget hole of $400 million next year, the $232 million that represents the full amount of the lack of a backfill for the VLF and our own structural deficits that we're looking here at in the city. And so we've got a big challenge ahead of us. In terms of that challenge, we have to do a couple of things. One, we have to have a legislative strategy. And I think I agree with Mr. Smith. There's plenty of blame to go around here. While Governor Schwarzenegger is without question someone who has recanted on a promise to the people of this state, make no mistake, it was the California Legislature that put cities and counties, held them hostage, thinking that Governor Schwarzenegger would not shoot. Well, guess what, folks? He shot. And as a result, public safety in Los Angeles and all across the state will suffer. And so let's spread the blame around, everyone. The legislature understands, as the city attorney made absolutely clear, that they not only made a promise, they codified that promise in legislation. They have a legal responsibility to backfill the VLF in every single discussion that we've had over the years in the legislature. There was always the understanding that there was that legal responsibility, and we're going to have to make sure that they address it. The city itself and our own budget tightening—we heard from the budget chair—he is absolutely correct. We're going to have to do—engage in self-help. We're going to have to look within. We can't rely on just the legal and legislative strategies. We're going to have to look within our own departments. I stand with Martin Ludlow and say that at the last resort, we want to lay off or furlough employees. But make no mistake about it, nothing can be a sacred cow when you're looking at $400 million deficit. Nothing can be off the table—the police department, the fire department, every single department in this city has to be looked at. Finally, I agree with Councilmember Reyes. We want to learn from what happened at the MTA. We want to learn what's happened—from what's happened in the county. When there's a crisis in a family, the family comes together. When there's a crisis in the family, the family says, "Let's discuss together." Employees, the management, how we can find the savings in every single department. Let's discuss together what we can do together to generate the savings that we need to address and weather this crisis. I look forward to working with all of my colleagues to—on these three points—the legislative, the legal, and the city self-help that's going to be critical to weather this crisis.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Good friend suggested that—I use these words, building on what my colleague Ms. Gruehl has said—when the rubber meets the road, well, in many cases, the roads aren't paved, and there's hardly any rubber left, and we're in for a very rough ride. Now, we're not here as a city because of our own mismanagement, but we don't have a lot of time to waste blaming others. I just have a few suggestions, and I think that they're important. And I concur with the colleagues who've already said how critical it will be for us to be forthright and to be honest and direct and have difficult, possibly painful conversations with our constituents, but we have to tell people the truth and to work in concert, not only with each other, but to determine whether we share priorities, such as permanent shelter beds, wrecking parks, libraries, and infrastructure. For myself and for Mr. Reyes and Mr. Parks and colleagues similarly situated, infrastructure is critical for our communities, because we were already lagging behind on gutters and curbs and sidewalk repair and the basic services. And also, so very critical is to hold on to the people and the jobs that we currently employ here, so that we, as a city, can continue to attract investment in our communities. The suggestion is this—I have had a lot of success in working with the County of Los Angeles, in the county using its public health and mental health dollars and leveraging that with our city infrastructure funding and programs on issues regarding the homeless. And I hope—and I will encourage us all—to look at each issue from the perspective of how we can work in a coordinated fashion with the County of Los Angeles as well to maximize a positive impact for the constituents we represent.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Cindy Mosikowski, for calling us together today on this urgent matter. Last night, Sacramento performed something called the Triple Flip. And right now, they get a zero on that triple flip, because they left out—as you can see in the middle of that zero—with no backfill. They are not planning to give that money back to all of you, the taxpayers of Los Angeles and of every city throughout the state. Coincidentally, this happened in the State Assembly, in that section of the legislature. And an individual tried to amend the bill last night, and they were not allowed to. And that amendment would have not completely addressed, but put back on the table the fact that they should not do this triple flip without affecting the needs of every constituent of California and put the vehicle license fee backfill back on the table in full front view of themselves and of all of us. That didn't happen. And they adjourned about 10 o'clock last night in the State Assembly. They say that—the State Assembly is saying that they're ready to resume the discussion that we're all talking about today in January. That's not good enough. Those assembly bills are now going over to the Senate. We have a second chance at an opportunity to watch Sacramento do the right thing. And that's at 3 o'clock today, when the State Senate resumes their portion of their responsibilities to all of us. And they can—they're going to entertain those bills that got out of the State Assembly. And they can amend those bills, as was attempted yesterday, and put the vehicle license fee back on the table, which, to us Angelinos, is a couple of hundred million dollars at the least. Now, today, after 3 o'clock, they might be able to do the right thing and put the backfill back in. And that triple flip, I think, from my standards, would get about an 8.5. And the urgency and the solemnness that you see on the faces and the voices of your representatives, all of us—the mayor and all of us council members—will change drastically. But let me tell you why it's going to change, because without that, our police officers, our firefighters, and our senior meal programs—just a few examples—are currently left out in the cold. And we don't want to see that happen. No one wants to see that happen. Now, why Sacramento doesn't understand that, I don't know. I can promise you this. I thought when I got elected to the city council, I was going to not bother my former colleagues in Sacramento and just focus on my job here locally. But I found that the first day I got elected, within 24 hours, I was flying up with the mayor and a bunch of us back to Sacramento to try to get them to understand the realities that we're all dealing with. And unfortunately, I was out of the city on city business today, and I flew back early this morning to once again address what the heck is Sacramento doing to us? What are they doing to all of us as constituents? Not as council members, but as constituents. My job is going to be a little different than I thought. I'm going to be spending a lot more time in Sacramento, a lot more time on the phone to Sacramento, and a lot more time trying to get their attention to try to educate them about the fact—the simple fact—that the same people that they say they need to protect and serve are the same people that we actually protect and serve as local government. They're not state troopers that come to your door when you call 911. They're LAPD. They're not state firefighters that come to your home, as we saw recently on television, when the flames come over the hill. Those are alley-fire police officers. And those seniors who need those meals on wheels, that's money that the city puts into their mouths. Please don't forget that.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, Ms. Hahn really hit on what we have to do. And I was here in 1980, when we had three budgets in one year, three budgets. We had an interim budget and an emergency budget, and our regular budget was thrown away within months of the election. So we've been through this before. Ms. Hahn is actually right, what we have to do. I know Mr. Parks, myself, Ms. Mosikowski, Mr. Cardenas, and Mr. Garcetti, the Finance Committee. We'll meet every day, every night, whatever we have to do to fix the problem here. But the problem isn't just here. And I'm really sorry to hear a number of my colleagues take shots at the governor. He's been there a few weeks. He pulled the trigger, yeah. But this is a problem of 121 people in Sacramento. The governor's one of them. The other 120 is the state legislature. This is a problem in Sacramento, and it's not one party, it is both parties. And we shouldn't concentrate on one man, but all of them. I don't know if anybody in this room has called Mr. Weston this morning to find out what happened. I don't know if anybody here has called Senator Burton to find out what happened. I know none of you called Arnold Schwarzenegger to find out what happened, but we need to know that before we start working next week. And so I challenge you, those of you particularly who are very active in the majority party, get on the phone, get some intelligence for us, find out what's going on. I make this pledge to you. I am going to be in a face-to-face relationship with the governor tonight. That is going to be a point of discussion, and I will report to each and every one of you on Monday morning—or earlier, if I can get ahold, if it's important—on what he's telling me is going to take place as far as he is concerned. And if it is truly as bad as we predict, then next week, we will start working as a budget finance committee to address that. But we need to know what's going on, folks. We're all standing here flapping our lips, but we really don't know what's happening yet in Sacramento. We're here on the news media. And to the news media who are here today, I want to say something to you personally. I watched the news reports last night and this morning, and you gave more time to Trista and Ryan's wedding than you did to the fact that the state legislature is taking police and fire off the streets of California, every city in this state, if this happens to all of us. Give us some time and let the people know what's going on in their state, because it is coming down on us in a tidal wave that's going to wipe out city governments throughout the state of California. Please, let the people know what's going on. It is more important than Trista's wedding and Ryan's. And last but not least, I think Mr. Padilla and Ms. Gruehl really hit upon it. It's a matter of education. If the news media want to educate the people, we have to go out and educate the people. This is the campaign, and all of us are really good at that, or we wouldn't be here. This is the campaign for our livelihoods, the livelihoods of 32,000 city employees and 10,000 more in our proprietary departments. You know, if we start cutting tomorrow, we wipe out our—every single library and close them down for the whole year. If we close down every single park for the whole year, we're still $50 million short of just covering the backfill problem. This is a crisis problem, and it's going to require all of us to be very active in our communities, explaining that, and getting on the phone to the legislature in Sacramento and the news media. For God's sakes, please help us.
Colleagues, I have four members on the queue: Mr. Parks, followed by Ms. Gruehl, Mr. Ludlow, and Ms. Mosikowski, each for a second time. What I'd like to do is hear from the one member of the public who submitted a speaker card, now that members have had a chance to be heard. We heard from the mayor earlier. Mr. Jim McQuiston, please come forward at this time, and then we'll continue with the council discussion.
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. I think Councilmember Padilla and also Councilmember Varengaosa hit it on the nose. We can't look at this as 7% of our budget. But there's another part which we haven't really addressed, and that is, it's a lot more than 30%. If we take out all the fixed costs that we have to pay no matter what, and we take out all the budget items, which are not really in our budget but are coming in for grants and this, that, and the other thing, we find out that our shortfall is so great. If we close down all our social services, we close down all the libraries, all the parks, we still have a massive budget, and we have all these fixed expenses, which we can't pay for. The other thing I want to say is that when we put a hard freeze on equipment—if the policeman— the policemen don't have automobiles to get in, then we really have to cut down the police personnel. That means we really can't cut down all the fixed equipment that we have to maintain. And we can't get rid of the mechanics because if we can't get that equipment fixed, these people are going to be standing around, and then people are going to look at us like we don't know what we're doing. But I do want to say once again, neighborhood councils are the key. I really want to get that information, even estimates, out of the CAO and the CLA so we can go to the neighborhood councils. Because, as has been said before, some people don't believe our worthy council people. They think they're just politicians and giving them a shine. I don't believe it. I've gone through those books, and believe me, I was a non-believer, and I am now a believer. We have an excellent, an excellent CAO, and we have excellent financial people, wizards at finances, and still we have problems. We really have to get that message to the people. There's no other way than to educate them on that budget and see exactly what's the problem.
Thank you. This concludes public comment for this item. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to make a couple of amendments and ask Mr. Weiss if he'd agree to a friendly amendment as we look towards that legal issue. And I would support that we have this at the council on Tuesday, but expand the discussion by the city attorney to deal with the unfunded mandates that we've suffered from for years, which if we go back for a number of years, it would be several billion dollars as opposed to millions of dollars in the last two years. Okay. And again, I would certainly second his motion to have this here Tuesday in closed session. The other issue is that we will have an extensive report by the CLA CAO at the Budget Committee on Tuesday and with a placeholder here on Wednesday. The real crux of that report will give us a overview and a format of where we're going with the budget. I support Mrs. Hahn's concern about moving forward. I would ask that, for friendly amendment, that we move her task force idea to the Budget Committee where we already have five members of the council, one-third of the council, and invite the controller in the mayor's office to come and participate in that budget hearing so that we can formulate the issues that are necessary. And so I would move that we make that amendment so that we do not create another structure at a time when we have less time and less money, and so that we deal with that in a fashion within the purview of the council. The other issues that we have been meeting with general managers in the Budget Committee for two months, we'll have completed that task by the early January to have met with every general manager as part of our budget process to talk about this year's budget and next year's budget. We also have recently met with the mayor and his office dealing with the budget, and they have accumulated significant amount of information during the Congress of Neighborhood Councils so that we do have that input already and would not like to replicate that at this time to go out and re-ask them for their input because it's already within the budget stream. We'd also, as we move forward, I think we made in this council a couple of policy decisions that were approved a few months ago that will help us stay on course as it relates to the budget. The number-one issue is we voted to ensure that one-time money is not going to be spent for multi-year projects. I think that's the crux of the state budget problems, where we have seen personnel costs, multi-year projects being funded by one-time money. The other policy that we approved a month or two ago was that all approved projects must have an identifiable funding stream before they're approved. And so with that, I think we have set in place a process to move forward on. I think also that whenever we create an interim budget, from what we can determine at this time, it's going to be momentary, it's going to be something that's going to be altered almost weekly in our budget hearings and in the council. And so as we move forward, we'll be giving that framework and continue to give suggestions and recommendations to bring this budget issue into an order. I think for all of us, I think it was a positive to have the mayor here and also his message that he has come to the realization that we cannot expand the police department. I think it's all of our goals to maintain the department at its current level. But again, we know how a significant issue we're dealing with, how difficult and maybe even impossible that may be, but certainly is a worthy goal. And so I would recommend again that the two issues of, Mr. Weiss has already talked on his, dealing with the motion to have the legal issues brought forward with an expansion. But also, hopefully, Ms. Hahn, you agree that we move that emergency task force issue into the Budget and Finance and invite the principals there. And we'd also like to invite every council member to come into those committee meetings, and we meet weekly at Tuesday, and certainly these issues will be hashed over repeatedly. And I think this is, as someone mentioned earlier, the task force that's really going to have to deal with it is this council.
Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. And just a couple of points I want to make. Tony and I were in agreement that we make sure the state legislature does not go out of session, that we have the opportunity today, that there were bills that were introduced, that they can prove that the state can work, that they can take action today, and let the people of Los Angeles and cities and counties across the state know that they are interested in backfilling. Because right now, it's a lot of talk and no action. And so I had talked to Mr. Padilla, and we were chatting about the action we took last Friday, which was to support legislation with backfill. And we talked about that day, for the legislature to not go out of session until they take action. Because we are talking about police officers, we're talking about seniors, we're talking about the disabled, we're talking about firefighters, and that is critically important. And Parks and I have been discussing coordination between the Audit and Government Efficiency and the Budget and Finance Committee because we've been talking about savings items that we could have, efficiencies that are going to help in our budget crisis. So I'm looking forward to, as I mentioned earlier, a discussion on Wednesday in my committee on consolidation of certain departments. But I appreciate your offer of us all sitting down and plan on coming to your Budget and Finance Committee as well because I think that all of us in our committee structure have to look at how to address the budget issue. So look forward to participating with that and the rest of the team to look at those efficiencies and cuts that we're going to have to make because we have to look at both as we move ahead.
Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very quickly, I wanted to throw out to Councilmember Hahn and also Councilmember Parks, depending on how we end up structuring this. But I'd like both of you, Councilmember Parks, both you and Councilmember Hahn, to make sure that the task force include all the department general managers. I think it's really important. These are the folks that are experts on their budgets. They know these budgets better than anybody else. Their involvement in that process, I think, would be essential. And in light of, I think Councilmember Vera Gosa and others have talked about nothing's a sacred cow here, we also need to make sure that in that task force, we absolutely make sure that the bargaining unit representatives are there. Because they need to be a part of this discussion as it impacts the future of our employees and so forth. So as we begin to kind of work this structure out, where it is, I for one think it ought to be there in the Budget and Finance Committee. I think you're right, Councilmember. But I just want to make sure this room's filled today with a lot of general managers who are very anxious, and obviously rightly so, to be at the table when we start looking at these decisions about the backfill and the impact that it's going to have on the city. So I'm hopeful that both of you be willing to support that, and I think you're exactly right in getting an emergency task force moving. And I think this would just be a very, very important component of that team.
Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to again thank everybody for today. What we have done today, we have done together. That's the underlying message we've got to keep forward. Mr. Ludlow, the task force of the general managers have been in recently, I think they would agree, and I would tell you, some painful meetings. Budget and Finance has been holding meetings not just a week, but sometimes twice a week, three and four hours, where we, all these people are at the table and giving us the ideas, going by one, by one, by one. We're going to do it more because it's a continuation. It is ideas, but now it's not just ideas that are talked about, it's ideas that are implemented. Ms. Hahn is right. We can't any longer wait for the old system, that is, a committee acts, it goes to the mayor, the mayor reacts. This is going forward with it together. The committee has started, the committee's going to have the first report. I think when that report comes in on Wednesday, the consideration of Ms. Hahn's motion should be discussed in Tuesday as to how we format it and what we do. And on Wednesday, we discuss with the report that we adopt, with some first, I don't even want to call them first-round cuts, but some very, very tight measures that we will most likely adopt as recommended by committee on Tuesday, as recommended by the CAO and CLA, and hopefully as concurred in by the mayor, that post-Wednesday, we then have a new day here, where the mayor, with the council president, with the Budget and Finance Committee Chair, and whatever appropriate task force, everybody is in this, everybody's going to have to be in it. The mayor has already met with some of the bargaining units. The CAO has met with the bargaining units. This is not take the time to sequentially do anything anymore, it's going to be doing it together. Post-Wednesday, post-Friday, when this council may or may not go into recess itself, we need to have continued activity led by the mayor, led by the input, whether it's conference calls, whatever it is, so that when we come back in January, we say, okay, we did this two weeks ago, where are we now? It's not, it's going to be day-to-day, and it's going to have to be not one report sent to somebody else. But I would love to see when we come back in January, a report from the CAO, signed by the mayor, signed by the CLA, and signed by Mr. Padilla, Mr. Parks, saying, here's where we are, here's been the interim, here's where we're going. This is what it's going to have to be. And I think that's the new day, the new paradigm we're talking about. Tuesday, given and building on the work that Budget and Finance Committee has been doing, we will have that serious first cut of what we have to do. But it's just going to be that, as we know, the news is getting worse. And let me just say that every dollar that we continue to spend today, whether it's out of the reserve fund, whether it's out of the UB, every dollar we spend today that we don't cut is $2 that we look at when we look at this mayor's budget come April that's going to have to be cut from then because it's money we don't have. So it's, the days for talk are behind us. Next week, we start rolling up our sleeves, and again, I think the message we did today with the mayor and the council doing it together is the only way we're going to get through this in the next six months and thereafter.
Did you have a point of clarification, Ms. Ludlow?
Point of information again, if we're creating a new structure, a new committee, a new task force, that's where I believe, with new dialogue, new information, we want to make sure that we're inclusive. Every general manager has an opportunity to be involved. So I just, a point of information on the concept of a new committee. Other than, and I totally agree, in the past, department general managers have been involved, CLA, CAO, everybody. But if we're going to something new, I think it's important that they be there.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. Well, you know, I really appreciate everyone coming back today and taking this time to discuss this, debate this. And I think what everybody has pretty much said is, we need to take bold action. We just can't do this the way we used to. As Councilwoman Misakowski said, one report going to one committee and then going to someone else, and we need to all work together. And what I've seen today is a great effort on behalf of the mayor, the mayor's staff, CAO, CLA, Budget and Finance Chair, and this council to move forward together. And looks like what we're going to come up with is a new emergency six-month budget, which may have to be changed after three more months. But what I would like to do, I know I made an earlier motion which we weren't sure could be heard, but what I would like to say is just to make sure that on Wednesday morning, what I move is that we do get a report back from the mayor's office, the CAO, on indeed how we move forward to get, is it the feasibility of this emergency six-month budget. And maybe you take care of that Tuesday afternoon in Budget and Finance, so what comes to us Wednesday morning is just a report of how we then move forward, taking this emergency team and giving us a new painful emergency budget. So that would be my motion.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to make sure that in this dialogue, whether it happens in the next two weeks or next month we get this report, I do want to see where we create revenues. I think it's important that we identify where in each department do we see the potential for creating revenues. It makes no sense to me that we start laying people off, we lay people off that actually in that function that participates in the accumulation of revenue. So when we start looking at our department heads, we start looking at our management issues, our policies, I'm hoping through this committee or through the special committee or the special interim budget, however you want to identify this, that we actually identify where in each department is a revenue generator possible. If we're going to start looking at vacating office buildings or public facilities, or as Tom has suggested, his observations concerns, and I agree with him in terms of our humanities, our libraries, if we're going to have spent already millions of dollars in your libraries to leave them vacant, that makes no sense to me. But if the county needs a place to provide services and they can't afford to build new buildings, if the school district needs to provide services and they cannot afford to build new buildings, why not collaborate? Why not leverage? These are the kinds of opportunities we should be identifying in this process. I'd hate to come to a point in my community, and I'm sure none of my colleagues want to do this, where they have to announce that, yes, we do have a brand-new library, but I'm sorry, we have to close it, without coming up with options. Or the same with any other city service we might have, in which we can, again, find a way to leverage these resources. So in this directive, Council President, I'd like to make a formal amendment, or however you want to phrase this, where we identify the revenue potential in the departments, and we start identifying the personnel needed to do that before we start cutting off those parts of our departments that actually are contributing to our revenue generators.
Yes, and again, as we've mentioned with other motions, all that is being considered on an ongoing basis in the Budget and Finance Committee and will be part of their discussion on Tuesday when all these issues are heard. Are there any other members wishing to be heard at this time? If not, I don't think there's anybody who hasn't spoken at least once, if not twice. And, Mr. Clerk, is there anything else?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
That clears the desk.
Okay. And just for clarity, before we adjourn, the motions or requests that were made today are to be included in the discussion in the Budget and Finance Committee scheduled for Tuesday as appropriately agendized, and Wednesday in the full council with the one exception of Mr. Weiss, who requests report back on options in regards to potential litigation. That will be agendized along with other closed-session matters for Tuesdays.
The reports.
Right. And that's coming already, that's on the agenda for Wednesday?
Yes.
For the full council. Excuse me?
How do we know that's on the agenda?
This is your motion?
Yeah, my motion.
My sense and understanding is that it will come as part of the committee report back on Wednesday, either standalone or if it's incorporated, the committee report, fine. But it will be discussed as where we go from Wednesday with the idea.
I don't believe in promises.
I'm not the governor. So, okay. Anything further? Okay. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.
Mr. President, since people are here and the public is watching this, are we going to ask for any announcement or adjourned motions for anyone?
Do we have adjourned motions today?
No.
Announcements? Let's rise for announcements.
Sorry about the quick adjournment there. Announcements today? Mr. Labange.
Members, we did adjourn in memory of Amir Damian, who was the great gardener in Griffin Park. There was a beautiful obituary of his work. He was a wonderful gardener above the Wilson Harding Golf Course. And tomorrow, 10 a.m., a beautiful magnolia tree will be planted in his memory by park officials, myself, and friends and family of Amir. Amir was one of the truly great citizens of Los Angeles who loved his parks and volunteered and created a beautiful garden in Griffin Park. And I just wanted to mention to all the who may be watching Channel 35, on this Saturday at 10 a.m. in Amir's garden, we will gather to memorialize the great Amir, who did such a wonderful job. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Other announcements? Announcements, colleagues? Mr. Parks?
I have one announcement. Tomorrow, at the corner of Marlton Avenue and King Boulevard, one block west of Crenshaw... Tomorrow, at the corner of Marlton Avenue and King Boulevard, one block west of Crenshaw, we hope the first annual tree lighting ceremony will go on for a 100-foot Christmas tree in the Crenshaw area. There will be a gift-giving program starting at 3:00 with the lighting at around 5:00. So anyone, listeners, anyone in the council interested, we'd certainly invite you to come out and participate.
Mr. Vera Gosa?
Yes, Mr. President. Members, I'd like to invite you all to the east side. We're going to have a, we're going to light up the bridge, the First Street, the historic First Street Bridge from Santa Fe to Mission Road, and it's going to be a wonderful celebration from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. tomorrow in Bull Heights.
Mr. Labange?
The east side, Antonio. If you're in the middle of the bridge, is that the difference between the east and west side? So you could be on the west side if you're on the west side of the bridge or east side?
I'm going to walk from the west side to the east side and back and forth, and you're going to be standing there right with me.
Oh, that's right. It's a beautiful bridge, and this is a great program that you have, and I look forward to being there. Thank you so much.
Also tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m., colleagues, is the annual Pacoima Christmas Parade on Van Nuys Boulevard in the northeast San Frando Valley. You're all also invited to that, as well as everybody watching at home. Bring a sweater, it's going to be cool in the morning. Any final announcements? If not, if I can ask everybody to please rise for adjourned motions.
Thank you, colleagues. I'm sad to report today that many of you know Abby Liebman, Abby has not passed away, I want to make sure that's clear, but Abby Liebman is a close friend of so many of us and started the Women's Law Center. Her sister, Marjorie Shaw, passed away yesterday of cancer, and she was just over 40 years old, and Abby's family has had to endure, I think, more tragedy than anyone should have to in their lifetime. As you may recall, her sister, her other sister, twin sister, had been murdered by her husband about eight years ago, and Abby had taken responsibility for the two children, and Marjorie had been helping also raise those two children. And so she has been fighting a battle with cancer and passed yesterday. Marjorie was someone who enjoyed life. She was an artist. She was someone who collected rare books and worked in many bookstores relative to that. She was a wonderful sister, a wonderful parent to these two children, and a wonderful daughter to Joan and Mike Liebman. So I would ask that we adjourn in her memory. There's not going to be a service. There will be setting shiva next week, starting Monday. I'm just asked, instead of any flowers, that donations be given to the John Wayne Cancer Center. So I know our thoughts are with the Liebman family, and that we hope families don't have to endure as much pain as they have had to in these last several years.
All members? Other tributes? Ms. Perry?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to adjourn in memory of a Mr. Ralph B. Helm. He was a longtime attorney practicing in water law and municipal law in Southern California. He served his country in World War II in the Army Air Corps, graduated from the University of Southern California, and is survived by his wife Alice, his three children Mark, Chris, and Patricia, and his four grandchildren.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.[1765.35]